Did everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everybody sign in on the best? Flipboard somewhere? Call me order. Roll call.
Yes. Over.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Anybody here for public forum? Motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Over.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have the public permit for the Zach County Sheriff's Office. It's been approved. Motion to approve it? So moved. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Boltman. Muller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, the building amendment for Ross and Kami Muller is a motion to approve. So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Boltman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Muller.
Recuse.
Okay, we have a, uh, I'm gonna open the public hearing on the rezoning request. Scott, I'd like you to give us a synopsis of what you're gonna do if you would. When we get done, anybody that would like to, uh, address the council, please come to the podium and state your name and hopefully you use two or three minutes and we'll move on. Go ahead.
Scott, I represent Lakewood Partners. We are partners here, the fourth one's gonna be showing up. We're gonna do some modern income housing development there. We're requesting forty foot, although we actually requested forty-two, but the, you're at the zoning R five allows us to do forty foot. The houses that we have planned to go on here are two to three bedrooms. All of them are. Most of our double car garages, we have four different options that we'd like to put in here, like I said, for low to moderate income, hopefully hit the hundred ninety-five to two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar range on a resale. Obviously, hopefully lumber prices come in on that, we can do it. We have a request for that, oversized lots, make you build a bigger house and not affordable for the workforce that the city of Lakeview has kinda given us some ideas of what the target price we need to hit. So, that's why we're requesting smaller lots, obviously making a thing cash flow in a development, is to get, you get about three more lots on there, uh, other than we had at their fifty foot lots. And, uh, we have a couple of different options, I think the city council has it of entrances, neither one's dead in the water, we definitely have access one way from the west. We're still having, throwing out the idea of the east entrance. Once we know what you guys decide on as far as rezoning, then we'll seek those two options where we're gonna be at. Which way we can get in, which, you know, obviously I think the west entrance, or east entrance is a lot better for the city, doesn't make us a lot of difference as far as ours does, because we're just selling the lots and the houses off of it. Access for public and the city's utility, public, power sources, snow room, everything else is a lot easier than that way, so.
Any other questions? Anyone else like to address the council?
Before we do that, if we can, Don, I just want to, or Mayor, excuse me, I just want to acknowledge, uh, we do have two written comments and, and there was a written comment from Steve Carstens in your packet, there was a written comment from Cheryl Solberg at your seat tonight. Also, you have been written comments also from Chris Mason from SETV.
Anyone else? Close the public hearing. Resolution twenty-one forty-one is approving the request to rezon.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On that, um, where the proposed road is now, that's access. How wide is that? Is that gonna be wide enough to plow, snow?
It's fifty foot, which means, which means you're ordering this.
Just, the other thing about this is that it has gone before the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is, uh, recommended, uh, for approval, but they certainly had an issue with any discussion about eminent domain, and they passed their motion recommending approval contingent without eminent domain.
I have a couple of comments, um, you know, I'm not a big fan of eminent domain in any shape or form, but the Carston family originally sold this land to Brenner, and I wonder what the, what they thought the use of the land was gonna be at that time. And I've been told that the access from the east was included in that, and then it got dropped in the legal, and I don't know if that's true or not, doesn't matter. Then Brenner did not have that access. These guys have paid a cement substantial amount of money for this land, and I don't know how you think they can just sit in there and eat it. So I guess I would, I think it doesn't matter to them, you know, I think it, I think it's unfortunate if they can't get access to the east only because it isn't good down by the other, it, it affects a lot more property owners down there, um, where the, where the south access is. It's gonna be harder for the city, it's gonna be more traffic out in the middle of the wrong road with not as good a view. Those are my concerns about it. But I don't think you can sell someone property and then expect them to just sit there. So I think the development is, is, is a good thing, we need this kinda housing, um, I wish that some kind of agreement between the buyer and the seller could be done with the east access. It's just my comments.
I'd like to address that eminent domain. I guess I never, I never heard here that it was brought up that we were ever gonna try something like that, so, I'm a big believer that, uh, you gotta work with the public that you're dealing with, try to make that happen on both sides, but again, like I said, there are concerns about eminent domain, and I never, I'm not in favor of that either though.
But they, but, you know, the way I understand it, line and can address this, I believe that they had a purchase agreement with the Carston family, a signed purchase agreement to purchase the ground, and then that was withdrawn, you know, so this land wasn't exactly, I mean, it's not like they never wanted to sell it, they did want to sell it, it seemed to be a disagreement on.
They had all their signatures, but we did have this Carston signature.
I see, okay, thank you.
Not a purchase agreement, for, for an agreed amount.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I address that issue of the signed agreement.
Go ahead.
There was never a signed agreement between the Carstons and developer. The Carstons, my mother was approached by the developer and by, well, actually by the developer's agent, real estate agent. They went back and forth on what the description of that easement would be, and it got to the point where my mother got quite upset with the fact that every time she pulled into her driveway, there was a new set of flags going across her yard, that this will now be the new description of that easement. It got out to seventy-eight feet from the south edge of her property up to her driveway, is where they wanted to go with the easement. That's when the, that's when the negotiations stopped. She says, she called me and she asked, what do I do now? The description of this easement is gonna be ridiculous, and I said, well, you have no signed agreement, mother, they have not signed the contract at all, there's nothing on the contract from Lakewood Parkers. It was all generated one direction to her, and they did get my mother's signature on it, but the legal description was never established. They had no agreement to purchase that property, ever, just to make sure that everybody understands that.
Steve, we put flags out, so your mother had a visual. There's three of us partners there when we met with her, and we stood there, and she agreed to that, so I personally put the flags out, I'm Scott lining if you can't see me anyway, put the flags out so she had a visual, 'cause we did not want to surprise her with anything. And that's, it originally it started in her driveway, then we moved it south to seventy-eight feet, which is the lot pin that's right by the light pole there, and that's when we, that's the day we put the flags out, when she said yes to that, and that's when she actually signed an agreement. Two days after that, or three days after that, we talked about that, that's why I put the white flags out, so she could visualize what she was selling, 'cause we wanted to make sure, we didn't want any hard fillings at all, there was nothing there, we weren't, we backed up three times with, from our original one, and then, Steve, you got, you got the purchase agreement, and that's when it went to fifty foot, and we agreed to that, and that wasn't on the table very long, but we agreed to the fifty foot for that sale price. Did we get anything signed? No, because then you retracted that offer also.
Well, Steve came to me, she had had enough with the, with the flying placements, and so I said.
The only reason we put the flags there is just to make sure she had a visual, just so she knew, 'cause we didn't want her to say, come back and say, well, this is what we agreed on, so that's why we put the flags there, that's the only reason the flags are there, only reason.
We're gonna move on, this is about whether anybody signed a contract, we're gonna rezon this, that's what the problem is. We have a motion on resolution twenty-one forty-one.
Mr. Holtman.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
So the motion then approves this resolution, and the resolution approves this zoning change, and then authorizes the preparation of an amendment to the zoning. Okay, Stan Kim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Boltman?
Um, I'd just like to say too, that I am totally against eminent domain on this project, and that those issues that were just talked about are between the buyer and the seller, not the city.
Correct.
I don't think the city should get involved in anything like that.
Then we're not.
Anyway, I will address.
Reese?
I'm totally against eminent domain too, and I, I would, uh, as long as everything gets in order, I would say it's okay.
Okay, and Muller?
I also am against eminent domain in any circumstance, and I will vote yes.
And Dennis Carey?
Miss Carey's, hope you guys can get it worked out. Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing on the designation of the expanded urban renewal area, before we start, Scott's got a little.
And I do, I tell you what, obviously this is a, a topic that a lot of people are, are interested in, but I did wanna bring everybody really up to speed on, uh, on, on this amendment, and what would be included in that.
Well, Scott's done, and everybody can take a chance and come to the podium and give your opinion one way or the other. We're gonna run through this first.
So I do want to just go through this briefly about this urban renewal plan, so we do have a, pardon you, one second. Is everybody muted? Okay, so about this urban renewal plan amendment, um, just several things, that this urban renewal area is actually known in Lakeview as urban renewal area number three. Um, this is, uh, was originally established then in nineteen ninety-nine, originally established then for the EVAPCO project. Since then, it has been amended several times, you'll see in oh-seven, in oh-nine, fourteen, sixteen, and eighteen, that it's been amended, amended to, uh, include different projects, or include different, uh, funds, and most often to include different lands, although there was no new lands in fourteen. So, uh, those, those are the urban renewal areas, and that might be a little hard to, to read, but you see the original pink from EVAPCO in ninety-nine, next amendment was in oh-seven, is blue, and actually included a lot of the, uh, the right away, and some streetscape work was done, uh, with that then too, and also included, uh, the campground area, rest of beach. Two thousand nine, uh, was, included the, uh, the hotel area, so the hotel and, and the restaurant out there as well as some additional right away, you see it runs down that, the right away there of, of one seventy-five. And an amendment in, uh, in two thousand sixteen added some additional right away, again, on the highway, looking at some potential beautification projects out there, and then also, uh, included some areas around the city shop. And then also in two thousand eighteen, where we added some land again, downtown area, added the Riordan salvage yard, added the, uh, the Beckman housing development area.
You wanna borrow my flip phone?
I heard messages going.
I'm the operator.
Try this again. So, this is the, uh, lands that are proposed to be included in the twenty twenty-one amendment. A lot of it's driven by a couple of industrial projects, the EVAPCO project out there, so EVAPCO is off to the right of the screen, only a portion of their, their land is included here in that, and then also, uh, Jacobson project is a big driver of this also. See a lot of the lands also along, along Highway one seventy-five, and then also see some of the ag lands to the north, and we actually, uh, needed permission from the landowner to, to include that, and, and, uh, it was his request then to, that we would actually include all of that area then in, in the urban renewal area. So why are these lands included in an urban renewal area? And just the main point here is that TIF funds can only be expended in an urban renewal area. That's, uh, one of the, one of the main, uh, limitations about the use of spending TIF. So what, uh, again, what's included in the urban renewal or TIF area, and for us, um, the urban renewal area and the TIF area for private lands, they've all, all been the same, we don't have different areas on that, they're both urban renewal and TIF, so lands that are within the TIF zone collect, collect that TIF revenue. So, just the, the deal about, about collecting TIF revenue, and you can use the, the original EVAPCO project as a great example, where they went out there and they built on ag land, undeveloped ag land, and that undeveloped ag land has a value that's down here, and when they built their original plant, they then add value that's up here. So when you talk about tax increment financing, the increment is between the new value and the base value, okay? So within that base value here, the, the, um, folks, the other taxing entities, the county and the school, they're still continuing to get their taxes off of that base value, but for that increment, it's collected as a TIF tax, goes into a special, um, revenue fund here with the city, to where the city does collect, the city share, the county share, the school share on these, on these new developments. Okay, a lot of that school share is backfilled by the state, and then also there are certain things that aren't eligible for, for TIF, like if anyone has debt service, they always continue to receive their debt service money, and that couple is a, another physical plant letting them. So, again, why about in, including these lands in the urban renewal, renewal area, TIF revenues then are used only for, for the purposes identified in, in urban renewal plan. The projects that are included in this amendment are these four. Uh, there, there's a water main out to EVAPCO, we'll talk about each one of these more, the Northwest Pressure System, the station deals with water, Jacobson incentive, uh, is an incentive payment to Jacobson for their expansion project, and then also the community center. So that EVAPCO water main project, what would, what would happen is the city is going to run a twelve inch water main from the water tower down the north side of Highway one seventy-five out to the EVAPCO site, as needed for their big project for, for, uh, um, fire protection, and be able to utilize their, their sprinkler system up there. But, uh, when it gets out there though, it connects into the existing water system that's out there, EVAPCO's currently, currently served by a ten inch that comes up from the lake, so what this has the, the additional benefit of doing then is tying in another water source around the lake. So, um, for our lake residents, that doesn't necessarily mean that you'll see any change in water pressure or anything like that, but the amount of water, the quantity of water, um, would increase, and again, it's a fantastic thing for, for fire protection out around the lake. As far as this water main project goes, phase one is done, and that is the, the work that's out there at the EVAPCO plant site, to where we have gone basically from the, from the highway right away north to the plant. And the cost there, you see a four, uh, five, uh, five ninety-five, also, another point on this is that the development agreement is already in place with EVAPCO. And that Northwest Pressure Station, we, we've had complaints over the years from folks in the northwest part of town, so this is school, um, the nursing home, and then, and then residents up there in that area, water pressure is, is a little lower in that part, part of town than it is in the rest of the area. So the proposal here is that we would add a pressure station, okay, and then, then what they're doing is augmenting the, uh, the water pressure by using a pumping system. Addresses, again, the low pressure in that northwest part of town, four hundred seventy thousand, there is the cost estimate. The Jacobson incentive, the, the city has, uh, has agreed to an incentive that is equivalent to the amount of tax abatement that they otherwise would have received, but we would give them this as an incentive upfront, again, just a, a upfront incentive helping them with their, uh, with their construction costs then. The incentive, sixty-six thousand six hundred dollars, again, that's just paid to them upfront as they're finishing up their project. Again, development agreement's already in place for that. For these, uh, for these projects, what happens is then the city issues debt to pay for these projects or to pay for the incentive, and then the debt is repaid over a number of years then, using TIF revenues that are generated in, in the urban renewal area, or in the TIF zone, and again, largely from EVAPCO, who would be the, the biggest participant, but also, um, at Jacobson's, and then any of the, the new construction occurring on the highway. Let me get to the, to the community center, the community center, uh, has been identified uh, in the two thousand sixteen urban renewal amendment with potential use of TIF revenues of three hundred thousand dollars. Then, right about this time last year, October of twenty twenty, the, the city council had a motion to increase that to five hundred thousand, I see what the motion was, to earmark the TIF funds contingent upon the committee raising the needed funds through grants and private donations, so that's the, that is the action that the, the council took in October of twenty twenty. So just a little up, update on, on where we stand then with the, uh, the money side of things, if the cost estimate on the project's about one point four or five million dollars, and you can see what, about the committed funds, the, so the city there for five hundred thousand, again, that asterisk indicating that that's, we need to raise the other funds also. Um, the Great Places Grant, now, we just heard, uh, within the past week that, uh, that the, uh, community center was awarded a grant from the Great Places, Iowa Great Places, and that grant's two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Zach County has agreed to participate, uh, two years at ten thousand, each way at twenty, and then the private fundraising side, so they'd be at, at a hundred and eighteen thousand. So, they've raised some substantial amount of money, it's eight hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, but still compare that to the top line, where you're at a hundred, uh, one point four or five million, that's still quite a little bit of work yet to be done, then for the, for fundraising. So you talk about what the next steps are, they're really, and it's, and it's to continue to raise money, so continue grant seeking and continue private fundraising, and I know the, uh, the committee will be, uh, putting outward about private fundraising and actually doing a, a fundraising mailer, will go out to everybody here in the very near future, could be next week. So, to increase from three hundred thousand to, to five hundred thousand does require this urban renewal plan amendment. Okay, the other thing that's unique about, about this one in particular is that the funds are on, on hand, they're on hand, yeah, in the TIF, and so we wouldn't be issuing debt for this. This, uh, question had come up too, why, why do this amendment now? Uh, and the timing on it, on it especially, two things, we need to certify that for, that phase one of the EVAPCO water, and also that Jacobson incentive, we need to certify that to the county by December first, if you had put internal there, we would have some internal debt to, uh, to pay that, uh, to start with, and then we'll turn around and pay ourselves back with TIF. And main, main reason why this thing actually is drug out here into the fall, and we had intended to, to do this in, in the summer and early fall, deals with health problems for our attorney, and, uh, we've used this, this same bonding attorney for, I think Lakeview used him for thirty-plus years, and anyway, he does have some severe health problems with cancer, and was not able to assist us, and we ended up, uh, having to be moved to a different attorney within the firm, and then, uh, that all just took time, so, um, Mayor, that is, that says.
The same thing applies, if you wanna address the council, please stand up, go to the podium, state your name, and try to limit to two to three minutes. Would anybody like to participate? All right, go ahead.
Felt like, um, felt like I was being stared at. Fine, um, you know, I'm here to represent the Hometown Pride Committee, the Lakeview, um, Community Center Committee, where push that thing forward if you'd like. Sure. Mind my rear, right in your face. Sure, that's awkward.
Sounds good.
So, um, as you all know, this is not new news, it's been, um, in the paper, um, at several of these meetings, um, on Facebook, that we've been working, um, hard as a committee for, um, since twenty sixteen for the Lakeview Community Center, um, if you've been on our Facebook page, um, as of late, you can see there is, um, a wide, um, display of support for the community center to be moving forward in our community for a wide variety of reasons, um, which really stemmed to the overall umbrella, which is economic development in our community, um, tourism is one of our, uh, primary industries here, and we know that is, um, the effect on the, um, tourism within the community, uh, growing and becoming stronger is, um, you know, goes to the quote of, "When the tide rises, all boats in the harbor lift," and that's what the community center is. When the community center's up and we bring visitors and more tourism to our community, it supports our local businesses, um, in town, um, we've been so, um, blessed to have additional businesses come to our community, um, our downtown improving, and the community center, um, is just, and the next step to keep the community growing, 'cause you're either green and growing, or you're ripe and rotting. So, I would hope that, um, our council, uh, would see the, the vision and see the big picture of how the community center impacts, um, not just bringing tourism to town, but our local businesses, um, as, as well, there's several business owners, um, here, uh, tonight in support of the community center, um, I guess if you're in favor of the community center, I'd invite you to stand up and, and show your, um, support this evening, if that's a project you would like to see happen in our community. Okay, that's, everybody except about, I don't know, you guys can help that grow. I guess let the record reflect that there is, uh, just a tremendous amount of support for the community center, it is, um, you know, truly a gift to the city, um, a, a project that we have worked so hard on and is supported by, by so many. I've had questions from. I've had questions from a lot of people. They're, they're tough questions, but we're prepared with those answers because we have done our thorough research, hours and hours and hours of time to crunch the numbers, validate the numbers, make sure that the plan is, is thorough, that it will work, that the center will run in the black. And we are very confident about that, and I think the support from the community just is parallel to, to what we've seen with the numbers. It's, it's, it's clear, and it's going to be a great thing. Period.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Gus.
He'll be fine.
I am against the convention center. The one reason is, when I was on the council, you voted on it, and the majority voted no. Scott Peterson said we need to vote again, we don't want to lose that money. And we need to use it on another project. So we voted yes to use it so we wouldn't lose the money. Well, I found out that you can't use it on another project. So I just don't like being lied to. You find out later that you just put it back, and now you're coming back with it. I think you guys ought to put it to this town. Tomorrow night would be a good night for a sheet, put up two sheets, find out how many people are for it and against it. I don't, I have talked to very many people that are for it. Just the hometown committees and some of the committees in town, but nowhere have I found where they make money. Carol turned down, they wanted 40-some thousand. They turned that down. They said, "You can't have it. You guys have been losing money." I think it's going to be a big debt to this town.
So what was, what was the comment from me then, Gus? In regards to TIF, or what, what are you saying?
No, I'm saying that when you initially started this, we voted on it, and it was voted down. And you said, "In order to keep this money, so we don't lose it, on another project, we got to vote yes."
What, what money is that? Is it TIF, TIF money, you mean? Or what are you talking about?
Well, it was the $500,000.
Actually, we just wouldn't have had that money back then.
Well, it was a grant from SAC or somewhere. You'd have to go back to the...
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
You'd have to go back to the meeting, but you did say that we didn't loan us the $500,000.
What years?
We used it on something else.
What years were you on the council?
Yeah. Scott could tell you better than I could.
About four years.
I was on there for four years.
About four years ago, I think it's on, 2007, something like that. I think about it.
No, now...
Later than that.
Yeah, it was before that.
I just don't remember you being on the council when, when we started this project.
Well, I remember voting on it, and it was voted on, and the $500,000. And you said, "Well, we don't want to lose that money, so let's vote yes." And here it is back, and...
Boy, I just can't, I cannot recall that. I don't think that $500,000 was available back at the time.
We're just now talking about $500,000.
You don't remember that?
No. I'm getting old.
Well, it was there, you'd have to go back into the meeting part when you first started, because it was a grant from, I think it was from, that Phil, Mrs. Phillips.
That went to the library after a recent grant.
Yeah. Now, she had something to do with it. Okay. Now, that's all I got to say. I just, if you go back to that meeting, you'll find out it's in there.
Okay, we can, boy, we can take a look, Gus. I'm really not sure.
But that's what you said, we need to vote it in after we voted no. So, but I just, I've not heard anybody that's making money doing this.
Have you talked to Alta, Templeton, Grand Junction?
They're making money?
Yeah, we went and visited them.
Is that right?
Yeah. If they sell alcohol, they make money. They make money. Dexter City, they all, they all run the block. I tell you, Denison doesn't make money because the alcohol goes to the clubhouse. That's the one I've found that doesn't make money, but they don't sell the alcohol. Just one of the bars are open seven days a week for, for an hour.
Well...
No, we're not, we're not voting. We're not voting anyway, just the urban rule for me to do. We're a long ways away from the community center.
Well, I, I hope so. I think there's a lot more to it. I mean, you can't get supplies now, it seems like it's, everything's turned upside down. I mean, if it started by, how long would it take to build it?
They still have quite a bit of money to raise. They're not ready to build.
Okay. But Scott, if you go back there...
We should get together sometime, Gus. I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, I, I know what's in there.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Well, I just want to speak on a positive note, because being out at the winery, we get a lot of people from not just Sack County, but all over other states, and I can't tell you how many times I hear about what a gem of a community we have, and they talk about all the things that are in Lakeview, and probably in the last couple of years, how, how progressive we seem to be. And I think this is a progressive move, and I think you'd see a lot of ripple effect. And we can only serve for weddings and things, we can only serve small, small groups. I'd love to be able to say, "There's a community center in town that would handle your, your larger groups." So I, I just want to say, "We're moving in the right direction. People enjoy coming here." I think that says a lot for all of us. And one thing I've learned from the wine industry is you work together, you support each other, and you try to move forward. And instead of being competitive, and I don't understand the money part of it, I'd be the first one to admit that, but, and I know that's always an issue, but I just want to say, "We live in a great community," and we need to realize that and, and push forward. That's all I can say.
Go for the, oh, go ahead, Gus.
Just as a business owner, also in this community that also supports the alcohol industry, I do think we should have a community center as well, and that's one thing we've been lacking for a very long time. I've had people come into my business as well, saying they wish they could have a wedding or a event, the reception here in town. Like I have said before, not having that community center, we send a lot of people away from here. And like you said, at the winery, people come in, they come into the bar, they come into the docket, they go other places too when you have these events in our area. And I definitely support, and like you said, I don't know the money side of it either, but it sounds like we've done a lot of work on it to make sure that that would happen. None of us have a crystal ball, but I'm definitely in support of having a community center to keep our town growing and being as great as it is. Thank you for all your hard work.
We'll close the public hearing. Resolution 2142, second?
Second.
Okay, so this is, is the resolution then to, to approve that Urban Renewal Plan Amendment? Okay, Wolman?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 516.
So that, that was the resolution?
Any motion on 516? Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Any motion to waive the second, third reads? Second?
Second.
We'll call.
Wolman?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Yeah, one more then is to finally approve, or is it number 516?
You have that motion? Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 517. I mean, encode the ordinance, between the parts and the creation.
Just that, what this does is, we had talked about the number of park board members, it's at three, and we'd look to increase that number then. This ordinance would propose to increase it to five. And then the, the only other thing that it does is assures that the terms are then staggered to the same few years. The terms are still six years long.
I'll make the motion.
Second? We'll call.
Tom's?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Can we waive the second and third, so we get started on this?
You can.
You have that motion?
I'll motion to do that.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Tom?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yep.
Stankin?
Yes.
That would file one more to find out if approved the ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
We have change order number one on the Third Street Curbing Gutter.
Okay, just on, on that park board issue first before, before we proceed then. So we have a three-member board, one term comes up at the end of the year, and then there's two, two more open spaces now, so we'll be looking for good park board volunteers.
Jennifer?
Jennifer? I had a funny flash.
Did you nominate Sam?
Yes.
Okay. We have a change order on the Third Street Curbing Gutter?
Yeah, I did want to have a little discussion on this, because when, so this is that change order down, or the curbing gutter down there on Third Street, it's more like John Snyder's house. In the, the original cost on that, $6,885. And when they, when they tore it out, it did make for a jagged edge then along that asphalt. We did ask that they would square out that, that asphalt, make sure that there's a clean cut, and that it would be replaced then with, with concrete as opposed to, to coal patch. So they did, they did that. When I was having a discussion with, with Mr. Lyman about that, my suggestion would have been that the city would pay for materials and that the, the contractor had, should be on the hook for some labor. Get the bill from them on this, and it does include the labor portion then also. So interested in your, in your thoughts, or Scott had anything?
We heard him to do it, we ought to do it. Dale, we know it's flat.
Yeah, we know it's flat and don't drain.
Not very good, but there was no fault. It was like a...
Isn't that, isn't that why we replaced it to start with, so we have fault? Wasn't that the issue, that the water sits there? Water still sits at the end of that driveway. We talked about this at a few meetings ago, correct?
Right.
And I said, you know, our, our contractors, somebody's got to hold them liable for doing it correct. Is it correct?
It sits at the bottom of what driveway?
John Snyder's.
Yeah.
Well, he just told his neighbor that it all drains on his now, and it's all over on theirs.
Well, John Snyder told me it don't drain any better than it did before.
And the strange is the fall of 153 feet, that's supposed to 132 inch per foot.
In my contract, it says I can't guarantee water flow without changing the street.
You can't put the gutter up higher than the street. I was down there that day.
So we did a project that wasn't fixing nothing.
Unless you had the whole seven inch.
Well, Scott, I, I'm not arguing with you, don't get me wrong here. I was at the meeting a few weeks ago, and I talked about these projects, and we're doing projects that spend money that ain't fixing the problems. So we, it's just like we talked about on Crescent Park Drive, it's a first swing and a miss. Now we got to fix it, and we're going to fix it right.
It pushed your problem to another area, is what it did. There's only seven, seven inches to fall, but not 700 feet there.
So what is your, what is your solution, now? What is it you think ought to be done?
Well, so it was tore up, it should have been fixed correctly. If we need to raise that street, then raise that street so everything drains to the scorched earth. What ain't draining right, we have these problems all over.
You mean take the whole street out?
It was discussed before it was torn out, how much fall there was.
Yeah, see, that, that was my discussion, and I've said this before, if we're going to fix stuff, let's fix it right.
We can't disagree with that. We have to do what we have.
So you think we should have torn the whole street out and redone the whole street?
Should have done something, if you could maybe raise up that side part, that was a perfect opportunity when John Snyder had that all tore up. You could raise it higher right then and there.
The street?
You don't have to raise the whole street, you just got to raise the parts that drain that way. The street drains both sides, you got to raise his driveway area up.
Street drains from the curving gutter that's there north to around the curve. There's no inlet going north. So five foot from that existing inlet, it drains 100% north northeast.
So, and now we're trying to make it drain to the south?
No, we changed it to raise it even more than we could, and we drained about 30 foot to the south. And had to keep the rest going north, there was no way of doing everything coming south to the inlet.
So this is a perfect opportunity to discuss this, and Scott's here. So what was the discussion about fixing it the right way, what we talked about ahead of time?
I said you couldn't fix it unless you did something with the street.
Okay.
I said you have very, you have less than 132 some inch per foot.
So it's the same issue we got going on Crescent Park Drive that we're trying to fix. I'm just bringing to your attention again, John, you know what I'm saying, and now we got a change order for it again, just wasting taxpayers' money, making a swing and a miss.
I thought we did the best we could with the lay of the land. It's pretty flat down there, no matter what you do. And we can't do the street, we didn't have 150,000 to fix that street.
Well, I think we got money sitting around. I hear that at a lot of meetings.
It's all, we use state money to do the streets, so much for a person, about 120 bucks with the state centers every year.
Well, we got money for other great projects, we got to take care of what we got, so to keep expanding stuff. I love the expansion, don't get me wrong, so we, we got to fix what we got to.
I guess I was under the impression that this was going to fix the issue.
It, it can't fix the issue when the people that sit to the, I don't know what direction it is, but I'd like to say east. The people that sit to the east, you know, now it sits there, and from John Snyder's, looks to me like it does drain now. I, I don't know, I guess I should have went there in the rainstorm, but, but they think it's, his is draining much better. I, I agree, I think you have...
It was about two inches low, like John's, John's original driveway or curving gutter. It got raised there about two inches, because about two inches of water sat in front of that spread.
So now it's kind of, just a minute, now it's kind of sitting in front of the other two.
Probably closer to the door.
Yes, right. So, now obviously there needs to be, but, but a huge street project is a huge street project. You know, we'll, we'll be looking at that, I mean, and the new council will be looking at that through the new ba, through the new budget hearings, but it, it'll be a major, major, major expense. And we got to figure out what street...
That would probably be your easiest thing, if you ever did, put a new inlet in, expand the curving gutter, not the curving gutter, but the inlet up to there, into the middle about 700 feet. Because it's about 700 feet from the south end where we did it to the, around the corner, I'm going to call it northeast, whichever direction you want to call it, there is no inlet in there at all.
Yeah, and I think that's part of our problem around town, is we don't have enough inlets. But we owe those people on Lakeshore, or Lakeshore Drive, you know, we owe them, we made a commitment to them too, and they're three years out and haven't had it fulfilled. Into the middle about 700 feet. Because about 700 feet from the south end where we did it to the, around the corner, I'm going to call it northeast, whichever direction you want to call it, there is no inlet in there.
Yeah, and I think that's part of our problem around town is we don't have enough inlets. But we owe those people on Lake Shore or Lake Shore Drive, you know, we owe them. We made a commitment to them too and they're three years out and haven't had it fulfilled. So there's some major street projects that need to be addressed and figure out which ones we're going to do first.
And in regard to this curbing gutter though, and John Snyder, we talked with John Snyder about it and it, boy, it does not drain completely. And he mentioned that he might have a couple inches of water still at the end of his driveway. But he also said, you know, he would not recommend that we try to do anything.
I got a foot at the end of my driveway. Yes, you do.
Well, I was over the day, we worked about, if you want to know how far off the curbs, we didn't have this blacktop sticking out all over. He said, there's not much fall here, it's pretty flat ground. We do the best we can. I don't know what else we could have asked. At the time we were working.
Change drivers with extra concrete, you know, that's asphalt which I said we got.
Right. And I would expect the city should pay the bill. There's nothing we can do if the ground's flat without tearing a whole street completely apart. And that would be way more expensive than everybody thinks.
Well, do you have a, do you have a signed agreement saying what you're saying?
About the, there is a, yeah, there's an initial, basically.
But you went back and asked them to do more work? Is that my understanding is correctly?
After it was removed and ends up with this jagged hedge cut in there, yeah, we did ask them to cut and move that, ask them to patch it.
So obviously next time if we do a patch job like this, we need to do a better job of telling the contractor what is required.
And just I think be real careful about the tear out was maybe, we had gotten out of this more than anything else. A saw cut to assist with the tear out would have helped.
Yeah, the tear out was the complaint they had. Do you have any comment on that, Scott?
That was, that was kind of, it's a two-inch over like asphalt. Everybody's ever tore out anything around asphalt. When you put solid dirt, you have to let it to get out of there. The second one cuts out there because you can push it away. You have no place to go. Personally, that there way higher curb again was, you had no way to go on the right side to get the curb away. When you let the curb, it catches it behind, it's going to crack off. Right by contract said there is going to be chipping and will require a cold patch by soon.
Okay.
It's written in the contract.
He was very good that they said, I wanted to go this far and he said, if you go this far, you'll take all that straight and that's what we did. I don't know what else we could do. Pretty hard to drain flat grounds, kind of like draining, can't, can't really.
That's, that's good. I left the battle.
Yeah. I think the motion to approve the payment and move on.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
We'll call.
Stankin?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yep.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 2144 is authorizing the real estate contract purchasing in the north part of the parcel.
So this would purchase the, the north portion of that land, the north of the maintenance shop, okay? When you look at this, at this real estate contract, it does not have anything to do with the trail, you know, that, or that railroad right over. Okay, this is just the, just the land to the north. This does follow through with what was approved at the last council meeting with one, with one big change that benefits the city, so total purchase price is still $25,000. We would pay $2,000 down now and then we would make five annual payments. And we had initially discussed 10, but so five payments of $4,600 with 3% interest. Dave Janet had prepared this contract and should be ready to go.
Motion to approve 2144, so the, second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Muller?
Yep.
Reese?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, Bobby's got the lift station working?
Yeah, I tell you what, we just have, that's on page 35, just a certificate of completion for the sewer out at the landing and then also for the lift station. So they are recommending that we would accept the sanitary sewer and the lift station portions of the project. And you see that Bob's had the road down the grade now for a while in anticipation of paving it and then of course the rain, and I don't know what his, what his plans are yet because of course the weather's going to turn cold now, so.
How come the lift station, the red lights always on? Are they supposed to be? Or is it supposed to be?
No, it's not supposed to be, but I don't know that it is. Bean should be getting a, an alarm system. Maybe I got one, I got to go.
Well, it was late this morning when I went by with the bus.
It was?
Yeah.
I never got it.
I ain't trying to poison or grieve, you know.
I'll go look at it when we see it.
And it was, one other day we drove by and it was.
It was, they were working on it, team construction filled it up and the high level was on, on that day. And then the next day, because that's when we did the start.
I go by every day.
You have a motion to accept the. Second?
Yep, Dave did.
You did, we'll call.
Okay, Muller?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
We redo the health insurance, which was about 3 some percent?
3.82% on this renewal. And really not, not too much of note here, we would look to have the same plan. 3.82% ends up being about $3,700 throughout the course of the year. With one, one change that we, that we did make is that previously we worked kind of through Kettering and ended up with a broker out of town. Now Kettering and the new owners are able to broker their own stuff, so everything now is directly through Kettering's for the insurance.
We have motion to accept the insurance renewal?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
We'll call.
Stankin?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to send some Zach County grant applications in.
Yeah, just look to potentially do two, two grant applications, looking at one to be for the, for the community center project. But then another one that would be discussed here might be a pickleball project. And I know there's some committee members here who would, who would like to talk about it.
Nobody wants to talk about it? You want to introduce yourself as a new librarian?
I'm Mary Ann, you know that. Okay, I'm just here to speak positively about pickleball. Pickleball is the fastest growing sport. Michelle fed me the figures, 3 million? Over 3 million players. It's ideal for all skill levels and has very similar roles to tennis, badminton, ping pong. So it's really, really easy to learn. It's a very social activity, allows for a lot of conversation and interaction, which we could all use a lot more of these days. It's healthy, it improves balance, agility, reflexes, coordination, with absolutely no stress on the body that you don't want to stress your body over. It's perfect for parks and recreation because it's very affordable and adaptable. And I think we have a chance to get this going in our community. I'm from Storm Lake originally and we never got it going up there, so let's go Lakeview. It's great. Vicki plays.
I play, I love it.
Michelle plays.
Diane, I'm over here.
Jackie plays. Connie plays and we have a great time. In fact, we've now had to move it indoors from Zach City where we played Tuesdays and Thursdays all summer long. We've moved it inside to City Hall up here. And apparently someone asked, are we bothering you with the noise of the ball and the paddle? And they say, no, we enjoy the laughter. So, you know, it's, it's great. I'm all for pickleball. I learned how to play it with a broken wrist. I'd really like to see it happen in this community.
They know up in Zach City, the pickleball courts are busy all the time.
Do you have a motion to?
Wait, wait, just a minute. Sandy, are you going to speak at all?
I just brought you all the people.
Thank you.
Well, the one.
I'll answer questions.
The one thing I do think it needs to be seen, because we kind of had a meet about this earlier, is that Sandy had done a survey among the campers, is that right? About what they would like to see added to our community for their enjoyment. And one of them was pickleball. That's kind of how it got started. And then there's people that play that are interested in having it and would like to fundraise for it, I might add. The committee is committed to fundraising.
Really got kicked into gear Vicki is when the red volleyball court got vandalized at the campground. And it was like, oh, what are we going to do at this pace? And then also then pickleball really got started. It might not have been the perfect place to have it, but that's how this whole thing then exploded.
You might want to explain because not everybody's seen what we're looking at, where it's going to be.
So we're, we kind of had three different choices. One was the campground. And we kind of decided that was in a good area. The next place that was asked about was right next to the mud volleyball court. And I didn't think that was the greatest place, others did. Where it has ended up that we're looking, just looking at doing it now is where the new public parking is, where the new big blue dumpster is for the recyclables. Scott and I even, we'd gone out and measured it off this morning. The guys have already painted the lines where the water and all the electrical stuff is running through and it fits right in there perfect with the land that we have.
Hang on, I got to change the batteries in the camera. Go ahead.
Oh, so it's just, it's just an idea. It's already city owned, you know, we don't have to have. Started making phone calls, asking what it was going to cost, so the numbers aren't quite high. You know, we were going to go for the guest home, go for two ports right out the door, but maybe realistically is to start with one, see how it goes over, see what the need is and then proceed on.
John, can I, can I say something?
All right, go ahead.
I'm just going to stand here. I'm Connie Aysom, I play pickleball and I write a lot of the grants for Lakeview. And I can tell you as a grant writer, I can get probably a Wellmark and an ARP grant and both of them would be a decent price, or a decent amount I should say. So I think, I think it'll be an easy thing to do, I really do.
So with, with that council, as you looked at your page there at 38 of your packet, you see that there was this proposal there for two, two pickleball courts placed along, placed the long end to the long end. So it can be long and narrow along that area there by McCorris. But then there's, there's a cost estimate then at your seat as you were getting there. So Candy did a great job of working, working with vendors. These are all very, very solid numbers now, but they, of course, they keep going up, so.
Let me say something about the numbers, they're stocked very heavy. Every vendor came back and said like this, like, does the pickleball have to have that big of aprons? Stuff like that. We went as big as possible. We can always go back. And every one of the vendors, the fencing said, this is pretty heavy. This fencing bid came in as putting in nine or 10-foot fence on every corner, on every place all around. You don't need 9-foot fence everywhere. It was just to get the project started and fencing right now is outrageous because of steel prices. So maybe by the time this gets going, it will considerably come down, but all these numbers are heavy.
So when you think about turning this around and applying for a grant right away, Zach County Adomin grants are due very shortly. In order to receive real favorable support from Zach County Adomin, you got to show that there's some, some match and how that's going to occur. And we know that Connie can certainly work on grants and that the committee is willing to work on fundraising stuff. So the question would be whether the city would support this project in some manner.
I think, I'm in favor of this project, obviously. I would like to see one here. There's others in town here that play also, that aren't here tonight. I, you know, if we could start with maybe one court and I'm not so sure that by the time we're done fundraising and the time we get the grants that we aren't going to have enough for two courts in the spring. And I think some of your bids are going to be a little bit better hopefully, so I'd like to make a motion that we move ahead with this. Is that the kind of motion you want?
Can those of us out here know what the cost is?
Sure. Total cost on, on two, two pickleball courts, total cost is right at $100,000. The, this initial grant that we would apply for, for Zach County Adomin is $25,000. And so if they're, if they're looking at one to start with, we would look at maybe something along the line of half that amount and fund half that with the grant and some with some additional grants, fundraising and then again the question about whether the city would financially participate.
Yeah, do you, I don't know, do you want to put a cap on it for the city, you know, that the, kind of like the community center, that the committee has to come up with a percentage of grants and, I mean, I don't know what anybody thinks. I'm certainly open to that. I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Chris?
You need to show 50% cash match. Part of that can be volunteer labor. So you cannot prospect other grants as part of your cash match.
Okay.
So the city's commitment right now would have to be $25,000 for the 50, $25,000 award.
All right, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
I'll make that.
That should be work?
You can, volunteer labor can be counted towards, part of the cash match, the in-kind contribution of the, of the community would count towards that. That's always how we've looked at that. So you could put city employees on the project and count that towards the project dollars. But you could certainly still go after other grants, but until they're secured, we can't count that as matching costs.
Connie, you're confident we get some of that by spring?
Oh, I think so, yeah. I think both ARP and Wellmark will be, two of them though.
Because we got Wellmark for this flashback, $50,000, right?
Tammy wrote that one, yeah.
This is the same thing?
Yep.
Your motion, Vicki, would say $25,000?
Yes, contingent on them getting the other grant money.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Hey, Tom?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Reese? Wolman?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
City administrative report?
Well, you have nothing other than, you see the Zach County League. Zach County League is, it's not until the 17th, but it'll be over in Auburn at the, at the new restaurant over in Auburn on 17th. And then Northwest Iowa League's right away the next day at 18th and.
Any motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Second? Please adjourn. Thanks everybody for coming.